Everybody, welcome to the New Brunswick Board of Education meeting on June 19th. I'll begin by reading the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on March 2nd, 2018 to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall 78 by our speed, New Brunswick. Mr. General, roll call please.
Mr. Hodges. Sit down.
Yes.
Mrs. Seelis. Mr. Shukitis.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer. Ms. Varela. Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
Have a floor.
Please rise as Dr. Johnson leads us in the flexing. Ready, salute.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, the closeout Board of Education meeting will be held on Thursday, June 28, 2018, beginning at 5:30 PM at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. The regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 17, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM here at the Brunswick High School in the auditorium. I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson and I think he has the presentations.
Yes, good afternoon. We have a number of presentations today, this evening. We're going to begin with the spelling bee recognition of our students. We also have a presentation where we're going to highlight and talk a little bit about some of our aspiring leaders. We will go through an Educated the Year Award and acknowledge our retirees. We'll let the first start with our spelling bee recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing the winners of our New Brunswick Public Schools' fifth grade spelling bee. All fifth graders across the district competed in our spelling bee competition in their individual schools, and five finalists advanced to the district round. After some very, very difficult spelling, we are proud to present tonight our top three winners. When I call your name winners, I'm going to ask you to come up to the stage along with your building principal. From Lincoln Annex, we have Charlene Molina in third place. In second place, Alani Crespo from Livingston School. And our first place winner from Paul Robeson School, we have Chris Roeblais. It doesn't look like any of our winners came tonight because we were able, uh? Is this Christopher? Christopher. And Mr. Mooreing is here as well. Christopher, congratulations. Dr. Caldwell, Dr. Johnson, would you like to see the picture as well? For Dr. Carson, please. Is that your teacher?
Moving along, just wanted to talk a little bit about the program that we have put in place with our aspiring leaders. Priority two of our strategic plan outlines our deep commitment to retaining high-performing and high potential staff. Last year, we began making strides in accomplishing that goal through our aspiring leaders program. Our program is designed for teacher leaders who aspire to be supervisors, vice principals and principals, and our current supervisors and vice principals who aspire to be principals or directors. The first cohort of teachers is completing the first phase of the program, and we now have a second cohort of teachers and a cohort of administrators. They were all nominated from principals who saw some type or some form of leadership from within. At this time, I would like to ask the first cohort of teachers, leaders to come up for recognition. Angelati Baggar. Lisa Kokati Yerena. Norma Sanzito. Christopher Favors. McAdally Gedding. Darla Wood. Camille Royce Goodden. Norma Perez. Nadine Sanchez. Hope Wilkins. Christopher Manor. Looking in front, just want to let you know that of this group presently, one member of this cohort will become a principal in the fall, and two members of the current cohort of administrators will become principals in the fall. In addition, three members of this cohort have received an award and has been recognized for the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. What we're going to do right now is just show a presentation that they put together, experience and highlighting their experiences through the program. You can stand on the side, so. Okay. Thank you.
Our district's vision is to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders. What the New Brunswick Aspiring Leaders Program has taught me is that the statement is not limited to the work we do with our students. It's about building the capacity of every member of our organization in order to achieve sustainable growth and change. That is what leadership is all about.
They say no matter what you do for a living, change is the one thing you can always count on. The one thing we have in common is our leaders. We never settle for less than what we can be, what we can share, give, or create. We want to understand what's really going on so we can help make a difference and transform. It all starts with us, telling the truth, building relationships, renewing our passion, which gives us the ability to influence others.
Leadership is making sure that what we expect from our staff members, we are modeling, demonstrating, and wholeheartedly believing it. Leadership, to me, is the ability to transcend all the limits placed upon us as educators. I need to be the change I want to see, and I'm so proud to be here. Lastly, as a leader, I would promote a culture where everyone demands the best from one another.
To me, leadership is synonymous with bravery. It is to have the courage to keep moving forward and trust that the others who are following. A leader is brave and gives others a voice by listening to what others have to say, by leading. You must be with control and be brave.
Leadership is proactive rather than reactive. It's stimulating growth and reflection. It's building an inspiring vision that others will follow and lead. It's cultivating an environment that supports and enhances learning together and from one another. A leader is one who knows the way, learns the way, and shows the way.
My biggest takeaway from the aspiring leadership program is that learning never ends. It's ongoing, and being reflective in your daily practice is an important part of that process. As leaders, we need to inspire those around us to become leaders, to build a community of achievement at a high level.
My takeaway from the MBAOP group that entertained the leadership has helped to form a vision in my mind that I would take if a leader in my support or any other. That vision includes qualities of leadership, most notably good communication, honesty and integrity, effort to inspire others, and decision-making capabilities.
Leadership, to me, is the collaboration with others and using our shared patience. It's always having our students as a fourth line of our communication. Leadership cannot be done alone or in isolation. With collaboration with others, we can all learn and execute. Leadership is continuing to reflect not only on ourselves but as a whole in order to adapt and forward toward our goals.
Leadership is empowering others to realize their potential and work towards a common goal. It is a lifelong commitment to being a leader. Effective leaders embrace change and are supportive through the successes and vulnerabilities that come along the way. Leadership is an art of inspiring others to translate a vision into reality.
Leadership is feel-good and that leading and supporting teams is not a question of leadership. Joint leadership is enhanced by sincere, positive behaviors, best practices, and working with a focused urgency to do the best for our students.
Leadership is very much like a lotus. A lotus flowers from the mud and stays uncontaminated despite exploitation. A leader must be at ease in this mud, finding ways to thrive despite the uncertainty, challenge, and distraction.
Leadership is about building relationships, developing capacity in others, and extracting their greatness. It requires trust. As a change agent, you must earn your leadership every day and empower others to lead.
Thank you. Is this a two moment? Okay. You know, just to close and from my heart, I must state that here in New Brunswick, we are committed to developing individuals from within. Not only did I learn or my team learn through this process, these leaders taught us a lot through their voice, through their relationships, through their jokes. But I must say, from the bottom of our heart, you are the leaders regardless of where you go, and I know that I may not be able to keep all of you here in this district, but it doesn't matter because you will be touching the lives of kids, and that's what's important. So keep up the great work and continue to lead wherever you are and whatever you're doing. Thank you so much. Don't go yet. We're going to go to the corner so we can shake your hands before you go. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marnie McCoy. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and it's my privilege to present tonight's 27, 2018 Governors Educators of the Year. Give a round of applause for them. This recognition is a very, very special recognition because it is really something that's nominated by one's peers and cosigned by the principal. And so, we all know, for those who have been educators or who have done any job in the world, you can fool some people some of the time, but you can't fool your peers any of the time, especially if you're on a team with them where you have responsibilities to write lesson plans or do DUIs or whatever the case may be. They know the real you, so you can put on a show sometimes, but they know who you are at all times. So it's a humongous honor to recognize them tonight. So as we call your name, please come to the stage, and your principal will also accompany you so we can do some nice handshaking and photo ops, all right? Are we ready? And you all, sometimes this walk is a long walk for women who have on heels, so we may have to clap a little longer because we don't want anybody to fall trying to rush, okay? That was a joke. You could have clapped. From Livingston School, Angie Alva. Take your time. And you all keep clapping. Angie Alva from Livingston School. Dr. Johnson, would you like to join us here? Ms. Sanchez, where are you?
This is. Give me a minute, I'm coming.
All right. From Health Sciences Technology High School, Linda Ashford. From Lincoln Annex School, Michelle Bernard. From McKinley Community School, Sinetta Henry Britton. From North Sterling Community School, Ashley Delgado. From A.C. Redshaw School, Glennis Dupree, also a aspiring leader. Glennis is the wish year's co-host of aspiring leaders. From Woodrow Wilson School, McDalia Gurren, also a aspiring leader. From Paul Robeson School, Joyce James. Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts. We have to make sure we brand that the right way this morning. You are welcome. I had to correct myself before Dr. Johnson's eyes pierced me. From the Adult Learning Center, Denise Kiss. They're reminding me that I still have to. Thanks, yeah. From Lincoln Elementary School, Taryn Leary. From New Brunswick High School, Christine Patterson. From Roosevelt School, Norma Perez Martinez, also a aspiring leader. And last but not least, from New Brunswick Middle School, Kami Quente, also a aspiring leader. And as Ms. Quente and Mr. Clifford come up, let's give them one more round of applause. And our Support Staff of the Year from Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts, Mr. Calvin Garrel. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations to all of the members of that. So let's give it up for all of our faculty that are here. Their principals, their families that are here, the ones who go out where they buy their coffee, Starbucks. Congratulations. Can we get a picture? Everybody, let's look at Martha. You got it, Martha? You got it? Awesome. Thank you. Let's give everybody another round of applause.
At this time, we would like to recognize our retirees, and I just want to say a few words before we call them off. This afternoon, I was contemplating whether I should write something down or I should come from the head and my spirit, and I was going back and forth, but I decided to write some things down because I didn't want to miss some important parts. Just want to let you know, for many years, you have devoted yourself to educating children. Your retirement is a celebration, not just for all the years you put in the classroom, but for every child you helped along the way and the knowledge that was imparted. You will always, forever remain in the hearts of the children you have touched. You have given your time and talents in many different ways that made a difference in the lives of others. We thank you. Now, you can look back with pride at all you have accomplished. As the time now comes for some relaxation, you can now reminisce, and you can also say no. No more lesson plans. No more late-night grading papers. No more parent-teacher conferences or very long staff meetings. No more Achieve NJSGO SGPs. And no more last-minute changes. But what I ask for you to do these last couple of days, because I want to believe you do go back tomorrow right to having until Friday. These last couple of days, take a moment to stroll through the hallways in the schools and listen carefully. You'll hear in every nut and corner a sad whisper saying, "We will miss you." Your teaching will forever be treasured. Your contributions in student lives can never be measured. I want you to understand that even though you are retiring, the values and knowledge that you have imparted to your students will never retire. I can get an amen back there if somebody goes, "Hmm?" I thought I heard that. Retirement means giving up a job, not giving up the right to teach. I hope you never stop teaching kids the important lessons of life, and thank you, and thank you truly from the Board of Ed. Thank you so much. So at this point, we'll be calling up the retirees, starting with the least years of service to the most years of service. It's out of order? I don't think. Okay, well, I just want to change it up that way. It's okay? Okay? Raymond Harrison, five years and four months. Some people are here, some people are not. Leon Ed, seven years and four months. Richard Segal, nine years and 10 months. Reese Blakely, 10 years and two months. And there is Rosemary Domino, 11 years and 10 months. She here? Woo, yeah, come on up. She doesn't want to retire. She doesn't want to retire. Calvin Garrel, 12 years and eight months. Barbara Stoff, 14 years and 10 months. Priscilla Rosa. Priscilla Rosa, 14 years and two months. Dr. Brown, 15 years and six months. Edgar Otero, 16 years and two months. Edgar O'Tara, sixteen years and two months. Monica Brown, sixteen years and three months. Rosalie Allison, sixteen years and four months. Alwoda Estrada Rivera, sixteen years and five months. Elizabeth Morales, sixteen years and six months. Antonia Gomez Espina, eighteen years and two months. Augusto Menchala, eighteen years and two months. Blanca Moya, eighteen years and three months. Lynn Hee, nineteen years and eleven months. Dali Nemeka, nineteen years and two months. Naomi Weiss, twenty years and one month. Cheryl Lynn Baker, twenty-four years and ten months. Heather Bender, twenty-five years. Jaclyn McCurdy, twenty-six years and four. Laurel Dejama, twenty-six years and seven months. Cynthia Cowan, twenty-seven years and two months. Sharon Owaski, thirty-two years and eight months. Colleen Eppert, thirty-four years. Linda Nye Martinez, forty-nine years and three months. And last, and I purposely skipped this individual, who have dedicated her services to the brother for twenty-eight years. Well, maybe because I work pretty close and directly, and from the bottom of my heart, I will miss her retirement. I would like to recognize Nancy Capone. Let's give them a round of applause for their years of service. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. This is always among the best time of the year. The one thing we didn't say is that every one of those retirees started when they were five. So remember that. So, all right, we move on to item number four. Do I hear motion accept the minutes of May 3rd and May 15th? Second. And we'll call them.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yes. Item number five, superintendent's report, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. For the month of May, there were one hundred and twenty-nine district-wide suspensions. There were thirteen cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our June student enrollment was ten thousand two hundred and forty-five. Student attendance was at ninety-six percent. And our certificated staff attendance was also at ninety-six percent. Just to close out the school year, just would like to tell the board that we can't believe how quickly this school year went. It just seemed like we started Thank you. a month ago, two months ago. Usually when that happens, that means to me that we're working hard, we're doing great things. And then the saying that says, you know, "Time flies when you're having fun." I do feel it's really, really important to tell the board that I truly, truly believe that we will see outcomes this year. We will see substantial increases in our performances. Because I could assure you that our administration, our principals, our vice principals, supervisors, directors, and the teachers and teachers and all staff members worked really, really hard to implement some new practices, to collaborate with each other, but really to put students first in their thoughts and in their decision-makings. I witnessed that myself, and knowing that alone, there's nothing more that can happen but increase student achievement. So the work continues. We have a lot more work to do. But I assure you that the district continues to move forward. For the summer months, we now have one thousand two hundred and fifty students that have enrolled in our summer school program this summer. We have taken a different approach to how we provide services this summer. We have developed programs that will provide additional learning opportunities for our students that are accelerated, as well as to remediate skills in mathematics, literacy, and ESL. Yes, we also have our own ESL program this summer. There are also opportunities to inspire your passion in visual and performing arts, STEM, coding, computer innovation, as well as tennis this summer. So we are very hopeful that these courses will provide support and engagement to continue to propel our students in a positive direction and student achievement. And again, from the bottom of my heart, I also would like to personally thank the board here for giving me the latitude and having confidence and faith in me to make the appropriate decisions to move this board forward. Thank you so much.
Motion to accept the superintendent's report, second. We'll call this panel. Well, now move to item number six, the student representative report. This is Susan Vadia.
All right, so in honor of it being my last report, and due to my computer dying early, I will just, I want to take one second to say, I don't even know what to say exactly, but I really want to thank the board. And it has been an incredible experience doing this for two years. And all I could really say is that New Brunswick is headed in a great direction. I'm sitting here and I'm seeing the teachers, I'm seeing the New Brunswick Inspiring Leaders Program, and I'm seeing all my old teachers as well and the support staff. And it's amazing, the kind of change that we're cultivating for the future. And I am tremendously excited to just continue that journey. I don't know what to report for this month, but the students, we just, we just finished day one of our freshman orientation, and we're expecting about seven hundred and eight hundred new freshmen. And to see all these fresh faces and get to talk to them face-to-face, and know that there's so many kids capable of doing so many things. And the fact that we have laid this foundation of speaking up and using that voice agency that we talked about in the beginning of the year, and the fact that it's taking place, and we're helping students achieve that. And we have achieved that through this year. And it's just thinking of what we did this year and what we could do next year, and the year after that, the year after that, it's so exciting to see. So as my final report, I'm just extremely happy with the outcomes of our first day of freshman orientation. We still have two more days to go, and we're excited about that as well. The school climate, you know, everyone's excited to graduate. But in terms of myself, I will be going to Rutgers Business School, so I will be coming back all the time, trying to cultivate and see who's going to do this next year. Because I want to be in charge and making sure I know who is doing this. Trust me, I will be here after school and try to visit with the visitors past. But it has been amazing. I feel like it's not even the end. I keep telling people, like, "I'm not going to leave this building." I've done so many things here, and I have so many things planned for this building. It's not over. It's just, it's going to be, you know, a little cooler next year. So I'm just extremely grateful. I want to thank everyone for listening to my reports all the time and spending that extra hour here in this building with all of us. And I just, I don't know what to say. It has definitely changed the way I see New Brunswick High School, the New Brunswick District, and it's something we want to expand. So I want to thank everyone in the board. I want to thank New Brunswick High School, New Brunswick Middle School, Livingston School, everyone that has helped me get to this point. And I know that this is just the foundation for something more. I know that there's a lot that I could do out there. And being here in this position has definitely given me the strength to keep going forward. And I have met people, contacts, networks that will definitely get me to where I want to go. So this is not the end. This is not the final moments that you will see of Susan Vadia. I will be back, hopefully, after I finish my summer program at Rutgers. We will get back to work, so trust me. This is not the end. It's just taking a break. So thank you.
On behalf of the board, we just want to thank you so much for your commitment. This is yet another thing, over and above the schoolwork and extracurriculars that you're working on. You've made us very proud. It's been an honor to serve with you. And we hope to hear from you in the future, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, the facilities committee report. Who's going to take that? Mr. Spencer is not here.
Dr. Caldwell, the facility committee met on Wednesday, June 13th. We discussed the solar panel project. We got an update on Paul Robinson School. Mr. Gory, you're almost ready to get back into your building. Everyone's so excited. All the last finishing touches are being done, and we can't wait for that to be turned over to the district this summer. We also discussed the Hale School historical signage. We are still waiting for a response from the city for that sign. And the water testing is scheduled to be underway beginning next week to test the water levels. That concludes my report.
Item number eight, the policy committee report, Mr. Ties.
Yes, the policy committee did not meet for the month of June.
There's no report to do at this time. Thank you. Item number nine, the athletic committee report.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The athletic committee met earlier this afternoon. We received a Plaid Swarm update from our athletic director, Ms. Lowry. We received complaints, more update from our athletic director, Mr. Lowry. As of June first, ninety-four percent of all students who played sports at the high school and middle school are 2.0 or higher. There are sixty-two student athletes who are at risk of being ineligible. They were going to be attending summer school. There will be academic appeals that will occur on July eighteen, and post-summer school academic appeal that will take place on August ninth. Postseason honors, baseball, Wilson Gomez was all-blue division outfield and second in the GMC for his batting average of five-seventy-one. Softball, Shanae Alig was all-blue division shortsup, and she also participated in the All-Star Game. Middle school sports update, no postseason honors, but ball teams finish with full rosters at the conclusion of the season, which bodes well for our varsity team in the future. The Jonathan Casillas Forward Progress Camp was another outstanding success. Approximately one hundred and seventy-five students participated. New York Giants' attendance were Olivia Vermon, Malcolm Jenkins, Janoris Jenkins. But Malcolm Jenkins plays for the Philadelphia Knuckles. So he is a Super Bowl winner this past year. Janoris Jenkins and Evan Ingram. Summer schedules for all sports for working out, football, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, boys' soccer, girls' soccer. And we'll all be working out this summer. Baseball, we'll be replacing the head coach who, due to a job conflict, not with us, but he resigned. Softball will also be working out and volleyball. The first football game is, I think, the second Friday in September. And that concludes my report. We will not be meeting in July. We'll be back meeting again in August. And again, that concludes my report. I do need a motion to accept the reconciliation report.
Is there a motion? Second. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Miss Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
We'll move to item number ten, the curriculum committee report. Ms. Ortiz, is there a report?
Yes, the curriculum committee met on twelve. We had no presentations to speak of. We did have a conversation about looking into the policy of our credits, total credits needed to graduate. We wanted to make sure that we're in tune with the state guidelines, which is a hundred and twenty credits to graduate. And there has been discussions on either increasing or staying with the state guidelines. So that's discussion we're having. Hopefully, that we'll have some additional discussion during our retreat and come up to some conclusion. Other than that, we had like twelve consent agenda items which have been added, resolutions which have been added to the consent agenda items. That's all I have for now.
Thank you for that thorough report. Item number eleven, the publications committee report. Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I'd like to report, all the schools have so much going on at this point in time. The art showcases that we've had, the spring concerts that we've had, the spelling bee, prom, so many exciting things that have happened. Lord Sterling School will be having a family festival night tomorrow from five to seven. Thank you for nodding your head this straightaway. I appreciate it. And graduations for the New Brunswick Health Sciences. And New Brunswick High School will be here next week. On Tuesday, and the Adult Learning Center will be graduating on Wednesday. So we look forward to those graduations. And we are just so excited to have made this another successful year. That concludes my report.
Item number twelve, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. Before I go into that, one, I had a chance to stop by Jonathan Casillas' camp. I was so proud of our, the teachers that participated, the athletes were amazing. The students, boys and girls, were totally engaged. You know, we should have had, you know, the news should be here to show a positive relationship between football players that they beat up so much, and urban districts that they beat up so much. And frankly, it was an embarrassment that they didn't come out to talk about the good news, because they're out there talking about bad news. But that's something we should be very, very proud of. So it was just great to be there. And then the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, you know, I'm president of that board as well. I'll give the perspective of having our cohort two there of aspiring leaders. And the commission was just so impressed with everybody that came. They had a chance to see one of our schools and see many of our students that are on the spectrum, students that are dealing with multiple disabilities, to see the dedication of the staff and the culture that's been created there of students first and deep and committed caring. And it was just so nice to see so many talented people from New Brunswick there. So I'm so excited. I can't wait to see the next cohort. This is such a great program. And Mark Finkelstein, the superintendent of the commission, said, "Why isn't every district doing this?" Every district should be identifying the future leaders, empowering them, inspiring them. And so, so thank you, Dr. Johnson and the team for that. That was very, very impressive. Then item number thirteen, my president's report. Now, how many of you know today is Juneteenth? Juneteenth is the, June nineteenth. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, there was an announcement that slavery was abolished in Texas, in the state of Texas. This is actually a very, very important holiday. And it's a important holiday for public education, because many people have fought public education. And the purpose of public education was to really make sure that people were aware of the world around them. That people would challenge abuses, that people would challenge things that aren't right, and would be educated enough to do that. Now, I wish we had some students here, because what we're doing in New Brunswick is really not just teaching reading, writing, and arithmetic. We're helping to educate critical minds to question things. Because if you don't know your history, you're doomed to repeat it. So as we sit here on the anniversary of Juneteenth, eighteen sixty-five, we have other problems in Texas. We have families being separated. No matter where you are on the aisle, you know, we, that should not be. And if an educated populist really stood up and challenged the status quo, we would have a much better country. And so what I'm very proud of is, we're focused on this district, on making sure that any student that's graduating from here has a voice, who has the authority and the confidence to really speak up using research and their intellect. And so that is really where we are. So what we're teaching is not trying to get kids to graduate. We're really trying to change the world with students from New Brunswick. And I think we're making great progress, and I congratulate you on that. So with that, we'll move to item number fourteen, the public comments. Are there any public comments? If there are, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board. My name is Charles Crabbill. I'm a New Brunswick resident, editor of New Brunswick Today, and candidate for Mayor of the great city of New Brunswick. I want to start my remarks tonight by thanking everyone for their service. It's not easy to run a classroom, let alone a school, let alone a district, and everyone who's involved, including the retirees that were on there tonight. Deserve a lot of credit. It's a noble profession. And I do want to thank everyone for their service, including the board. Could I learn a little bit about the sustainability policy? I ran out of agendas, and I don't know if there's a copy of it in there, but I noticed you are about to adopt one. It sounds like a great idea. I'd just like to learn a little more about it.
Hi, Charlie. A lot of the stuff that's in there is stuff that the board's been doing for years, but I think the idea was to formalize it with a policy. It's green cleaning, green purchasing, purchasing renewable energy. So it's an overarching policy. I'm not sure if there's a copy in the handouts out there, but we can get you that if you need it.
I'm sure it'll be on the website soon. Sounds great. That's a good thing. I do want to speak against Resolution AX. Sort of to your comments, Mr. Chairman. I don't know exactly what this firm is doing, but as the editor of a community newspaper here, I cannot recall the last time I've received like a press release or a press advisory from this company that, I guess, is ostensibly doing public relations for the district. And it sounds like a great thing that Mr. Casillas did and the district did. I kind of agree with you that I wish the news was there. And I can't personally promise that I would have been there, but I certainly would have sent a reporter, at the very least, if I had known about it. And so this firm, it's getting paid, I believe, thirty-six thousand dollars to do the PR. I've brought it up before, and, you know, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I'm sure there's people who are in education, you know, that sometimes you have to say things more than wants to get your point across. And I do think that this firm is not up to the job. And you'd probably be better off hiring a local person to do the work of spreading public information of the good things the district is doing. And, you know, New Brunswick Today would like to know about those things and like to be included in those things, so that we can share them with our sizable audience. So I encourage you to book that down and come up with another solution to that issue. There's some changes being made to the pre-K providers. We've talked about this at prior meetings. I just wanted to know, if I could get a summary of the changes that'll be made. I know that St. Latteslaugh School is switching to Catholic Charism. And there's a change being made at Sacred Heart. Is there any other changes? And what exactly is it gonna look like this year versus, or next year versus this year?
Actually, the only change is that Catholic Charism is running the program at St. Latteslaugh. There's no change at Sacred Heart School.
Okay, but the district did move ahead with getting more space there, right?
We held the lease for the building. We will all continue to have the same spaces.
Okay, so no change at that location. Thank you. If there is an update, I'd like to hear more about the concept for Magnet School and the Dorfotek School that was alluded to at the last meeting. Is there any progress to report on that or any more information?
No additional information at this time.
Okay. I do have to ask you about the status of Principal Negron. I was told that he had retired, but I can see him in the list of retirees. Is he still on the payroll, or has that retirement taken effect yet?
The retirement's effective August first.
August first.
And he's on the payroll, but using up his accumulated sick time. So he's not working.
Okay, and then I'll just close by making a point I've made before. I think there are a lot of good things going on in this district. And, you know, this meeting is proof of it. Some of the great, you know, students and staff that were on there. And I think it's another reason that you should consider, you know, recording and broadcasting in your meetings, so that more folks can be aware of the good things that are going on. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for the council? Eric Don, we'll take a motion for the resolution. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call, please, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes, I abstained on items I, M, AA, AC, AE, and BG.
So, no. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Miss Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number sixteen, the finance committee report. Mrs. Sedowski.
I need, we met earlier today, and I need a motion to accept the finance committee report for June nineteenth, twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion?
So.
Second. Roll call, please, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes, abstained page eighteen.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Miss Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful. We'll move to item number seventeen, the resolution for closed session. I will read the resolution and then vote. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA ten colon four to six, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session. And whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. Therefore, being resolved, that the aforementioned subjects will be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. In the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public, where the reasons for the non-disclosure and non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act no longer exist. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Yes, sir.